Please call the meeting door, please call the door.
Eban.
Here.
Caledonia.
Here.
Canisius.
Here.
Geneseo.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Lebonia.
Here.
Mount Morris. North Antle.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage. Carta.
Here.
Springwater.
Here.
West Carta.
Here.
York.
Here.
I'd ask that Ian please introduce the Groveland Seniarama Honoree to do the Fledge of Allegiance.
Thank you Chairman. We have some guests today. So what we've been doing monthly is we didn't have a chance to do our normal large seniarama gathering to recognize the senior citizen honoree from each of the 17 towns. So we've been doing them as part of our board meetings to have the honored guest lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance. So today we have with us Patty Johnston, who is the Groveland Seniarama Honoree for 2020. Known as Patty and as a person described as always willing to help others, even if it means missing plans of her own. Patricia Niedermeyer Johnson has resided in Livingston County all of her 63 years. She's been married to Andrew Johnston for over 20 years and has one child, three stepchildren, six grandchildren, and six great grandchildren. A graduate of Geneseo High School, she attended Genesee Community and Finger Lakes Community Colleges where she studied criminal justice. In 2010, she completed the New York State EMT class. Patty works for the New York State Department Transportation Highway Department as an equipment operator and serves as the Executive Secretary for the Livingston County Traffic Safety Board. Patty's first volunteer job was as a waitress in Groveland at a chicken barbecue. She has volunteered with the Groveland Kiwanis and Ladies Auxiliary and is past president of both. She has served as a ORH leader, zoning board member, American Heart Association First Aid Instructor, and a Boy Scout Explorers Advisor. She is a captain, EMT, and driver for the Geneseo Ambulance and second vice president of the Livingston County Volunteer Fire Association. In her spare time, Patty held an exercise program at the Groveland Federated Parish. An interesting fact about Patty is that she was born and raised in the same house she is living in today. She enjoys the outdoors in all seasons, baking and crafts. The town of Groveland proudly honors Patty today for her many civic contributions. Patty, would you please lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America, individual republic, which stands by nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, from the Board of Supervisors, here is your certificate as the Senior Citizen of the Year 2020 of the Town of Groveland.
Today's Board of Supervisors meeting will be livestreamed on the county's YouTube channel, Official Livingston County, New York. All livestreams will be accessible directly through the YouTube channel and on the county's website under the Agenda, Minutes, and Broadcast Live. Livestreaming technology allows the online audience to see and hear those in the boardroom via video and audio. To provide the best audio experience possible, please be sure to position yourself close to the microphone when you are speaking. Next on the agenda, we had some minutes from the September 23 regular board meeting. Are there any additions, any changes anyone would like to bring forward before we entertain approving the minutes? Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second.
Move, Karen.
Second, Schuster.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None carried. Michelle, a public hearing, please.
Public hearing to hear the public comments on the tentative 2020 Special Assessment Rule of the Livingston County Water District Number One, Zone One, Two, Three, Four, Four Eight, and Five, Canisius Lake County Sewer District Extension Number Eight and Number Nine, and Groveland Station County Sewer District.
Thank you. I'd ask go forward, please give some comment on this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. Today's public hearing is the annual public hearing held to hear any objections on the number of units assigned to each parcel for the county water and sewer districts. This special assessment rule is developed by Real Property Tax Services. Units are assigned based on rules and regulations the board adopted many years ago on what designates a unit. A house is one unit, a house with an apartment is two units, for example. If there are any objections brought to us as any time during the year, they will be reviewed at that time. The special assessment pays for the construction of water and sewer systems. The special assessment rules show how many units you will be charged for water and sewer on your property tax bill for 2021. In other words, this is not a public hearing on the rate. This is just the units each property is assigned. A single-family home is charged one improved units. Multiple units come into play where there are apartments, double homes, et cetera. This is not a new charge. This is an annual public hearing. If you receive more than one notice, it is either because you own multiple tax parcels or have both new public water and sewer. A separate public hearing for the rate per unit will be held as part of the annual county budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With this hearing being open, I'd ask if anyone would wish the camera at this time on the hearing to come forward and sign in and address the board. Hearing is going to remain open during the course of our meeting. We'll ask a question later in the meeting also if anyone cares to come forward and comment on the number of units that they're assessed. Next, we have some communications. Please, Michelle.
The next conversation with the county will be the Town of Groveland on Wednesday October 21, 2020, at 6:00 PM at the Emergency Operations Center, 3360 Gypsy Main, Mount Morris. Thank you note from Bill and Julie Kerman, and the 2021 Budget Workshop will be held after the board meeting today.
We have the abstract of claims for consideration this afternoon.
Mr. Pengraziel, approving abstract of claims 10A October 14, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract of claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pengraziel. I'll ask at this time if anyone has any questions, would like any detail that's contained in the abstract of claims. Hearing none, the goal, please, Michelle.
Eban.
Aye.
Caledonia.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Lebonia. Mount Morris. North Antle.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Carta.
Aye.
Springwater. Hine. West Carta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 1865, absent 144, adopted.
Next, we have some privileges of the floor this afternoon. I'm going to introduce our first guest. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the residents of Livingston County, I'd like to welcome our Congressman Chris Jacobs this afternoon. We, as a board, on behalf of the residents of the county, work on several initiatives partnering with the federal government. I'd like to mention one initiative back quite some time ago through residents' concerns in our own experiences broadband improvements in our county. High-speed Internet was determined to be a significant effort that we chose to make some improvements on. We currently have an application in before the USDA teaming up with Empire Access. Certainly in light of COVID-19 with more people working from home, learning from home and ordering items from home, it's imperative that somehow we as Board of Supervisors help to improve this infrastructure here in Livingston County. And I'd like to ask the Congressman, any guidance, any influence that you have in Washington to help us secure this award and partial loan from USDA be worked upon for us. We're hoping for an answer on this application in August, and then we heard that it might be October. So I just personally, on behalf of everyone in Livingston County, would like some, any possible help that we could get.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'll just mention that issue. I am aware of the application and the need is certainly there, and I certainly will do everything I can. I know Senator Schumer has advocated and sent a letter. I will certainly do the same. And I actually am hoping to have a USDA representative, not necessarily from that division, who's handling that, to come up to our area. And one of the issues for sure will be the discussion of broadband capacity because as I've been in office the last three months, but running for this office for the last year and a half, one common denominator nearly throughout the entirety of the district is the need for high-speed internet throughout. And as you mentioned, it has become more needed, more highlighted where it is lacking due to the COVID crisis and telehealth, remote learning, and perhaps one bright spot out of COVID will be a renewed commitment and renewed investment from the federal government to make sure we resolve the digital divide. I've been trying to get more knowledgeable on this issue. I actually had a Zoom call with representatives from, well, actually, it's called the Congressional Research Service, and it's a resource that all members of Congress do, and they just basically stay on top of particular issues. And had a Zoom call with one member from that service that handles the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, which they have funding for broadband issues, USDA, and then also other government agencies. So I'm really trying to make sure that I'm aware of the issues and also all the, frankly, the pots of money that are available, to make sure we can utilize them. There's a lot there. We talk about high-speed internet, but right now, I believe the capacity or the speed that we're talking about for high-speed internet, a lot of times, is not sufficient anymore. So that's something. And also, we realize where the determine areas to have internet and not is by census tract. And in rural communities, those census tracts are much bigger. And if one house has it, they determine that whole census tract does have it. When in fact, it could be the only house in that census tract. So, you know, there's a lot to do, and we need to make sure we have good data to advocate for our cases. But I will continue to work with you, and it's a priority, please believe me, a priority for my effort in Congress. I wanted to step back and say it is an honor to represent you in Congress. I've been there a little less than three months. So I've been very busy trying to understand how things work down there and also getting the offices up and running. They had all been shut down, and all the employees let go. So I've been at the task of reopening the offices, bringing the staff back so we can use every level lever as possible within the congressional office to do everything we can for our region. We have now fully staffed back up the legislative office in Washington, our main office in Clarence, and then also our Geneseo office, who we brought back an employee that was here before. And really, the task at hand there has been casework, a lot of casework, a lot of backlog. Anybody, I'm sure, here every elected official is dealing a lot of constituent issues pertaining to COVID, and we are doing the same. Please feel free to reach out to our offices. I have three caseworkers on hand now, and hoping to bring another one on shortly. Soon into getting into office, getting sworn in, had the opportunity to meet with the minority leader, Kevin McCarthy. I really made an effort, made the case that as far as committee assignments, to ask for his consideration to be placed on the Agriculture Committee because agriculture is the biggest sector, economic employer in the 27th Congressional District. I'm pleased to say that I was put on agriculture. I was also put on the Budget Committee, which I'm really happy about because I have experience at the county level government, experience at the state level government, but federal level, there's differences in how the budget process works. So it will give me an opportunity to really understand how the funding of our federal government works, and hopefully I can also know where money is, where we can help for our region. I can say that in terms of the Agriculture Committee, I've learned a great deal, even in the short amount of time I've had from hearings, just the collegial nature of most people who are on that committee are ag districts, ag congressional districts. So as far as issues they are dealing with, I'm learning a great deal, and I think they will be allies as we move forward. We will begin the process of a new farm bill. It will take several years, but next session. So I'm happy that it will be there at the early stage so we can have our voice heard on what are priorities for our district. Just shifting quickly to the COVID crisis and what we're all dealing with here, I was certainly hopeful that in the summer, when I was in late July, that we were going to get a new stimulus package. That did not happen. We are still hopeful that a package will be negotiated because there are obviously more needs. Negotiations are happening, but at this point in time, you know, I had to be called down, back down to Washington. We were told to be ready on 24-hour notice, and I will go down immediately if good news breaks. I have also, though, worked with others to say if a significant COVID package is not materializing right away, let's get some stuff done that we can agree upon. And one piece of legislation I'm on is pertaining to the Paycheck Protection Act, a paycheck protection program, rather, that has been a very, I think, successful program to help our small businesses get through this. There's actually still $130 billion that was allocated to the paycheck protection program that has not been used yet. The program has expired as far as applications. This legislation would just say, let's do another round, utilize that money that's allocated to help our businesses and our nonprofits. I'm hoping that has some potential to get through. I'm also on a bill that Tom Reed has been a leader on, the Smart Act, which would be a targeted piece of legislation just for aid for states and local governments because of the significant need that our local governments and states have due to loss of revenue and increased expenses through the COVID. We're hoping we can enlue them a massive piece of legislation that was one we could get through. So continuing to work, but glad to be here, glad to be serving the district, and I look forward to working with you in the future. I don't know if you have entertaining questions or...
Somebody had a quick question.
Okay, well, the question I was ready for was the role of broadband. So that's the one, and I think that, again, may, an opportunity that will come out potentially of COVID is that I believe there will be more resources coming down, various, one being USDA, but others to support rural broadband, the increase of capacity, and it's something in the new year that I will be very focused on is with my staff. I would like to just, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I wanted just to mention Don Higgins, who is retiring, as you all know better than me. It's a pleasure to meet you today, Don, and I just have a commendation from the Congress on your service to this community. I want to thank you on behalf of the Congress of the United States. Thank you on behalf of the residents of the 27th District, of course, in particular Livingston, and best wishes to you in your retirement. I'll deliver to you on the way out. Thank you very much.
We also have a second privilege of the floor this afternoon. Mr. Chairman, I request privileges of the floor for Annie Chueko, Community Representative for Senator Galvin's office. Thank you, Mr. Galvin.
Good afternoon. I am happy to be amongst this body of people this afternoon to pay tribute to Don Higgins after a stellar career giving back to his community and his county for 33 years. I can only imagine, Don, and reflecting back how different things must be when you first began the job to present day. I remember very clearly on July 16 of 2013, and there was a terrible fatal car crash in Wheatland that involved five young adults from Caledonia. And that was about 11:30 in the morning. It was on a Thursday, and I think by mid-afternoon, we had hundreds of emails from constituents that were saddened and furious and wanting something done immediately to change that intersection. And the first person I called was Don. And pick your brain about what on earth do we do? We together met with a number of different people. In an unprecedented 24 days, we had a change to that intersection that, knock on wood, remains safe today. You're my friend, Don Higgins. I consider you my friend, and I'm happy to be here today to present you with this proclamation. You want to come up so I can do it in person? But I'll tell you, it has a lot of whereas here. It talks about, it talks about your record, how long you've been here. It talks about awards that you've done. It talks about positions that you've had. It talks about that you're a proud veteran. Where you went to school, you're a proud son and father and grandfather. Anybody who has been around with Patriot Guard riders knows what a tremendous meaning that gives to any event, and Don is always first and foremost in that lineup. It is my honor. I'm actually here to proclaim you. You ready to be proclaimed? That I, New York State Senator Patrick M. Galavan, hereby honor Don Higgins for 33 years of service to the Livingston County Highway Department. Congratulations.
This was totally unexpected. I had no idea this was going on.
It was surprising.
Thank you, Senator Galvin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have a third privilege of the floor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I request privilege of the floor for Jason Skinner from the Veterans Services Agency for a departmental update.
Thank you very much. My name is Jason Skinner. You've met me. I am the Director for Veteran Services and have been for the last five years as of September. So I wanted to kind of quickly go through the next 65 slides, kind of give you an idea of where we came from and where we're going. So I first came to this job, and there was a typewriter, and it plugged into a wall, and I was kind of confused. I'm like, what is that? So we've gotten away from the typewriter, and a lot of things are automated. So we're going to talk a little bit about that. We were in 2016, my first year electronically connected to the VA Benefits Management System. Only still today, nine counties in the western New York, from Syracuse all the way through Buffalo, actually have that capability. We automated a lot of the claims tracking improvements also in 2016 with an upgrade to VetRuspec, which came from my colleague in Monroe County, which you'll meet soon. We digitized all but three filing cabinets in our possession. It's over 18,000 records. We are so close to getting completely digital, all records scanned into the LaserFISH system. In fact, I was the first one in Livingston County to get the IT's Phishing License Certificate. 2020, we got the ability to direct upload claims to VA. And actually, this year, we have the ability now to do virtual hearings for veterans that need to sit in front of a Veterans Law Judge rather than go to either DC or Buffalo. They can do it right in our office now. The ability to, for claimants to sign remotely their forms that we need to file on their behalf. And we can now connect to the Department of Defense to get veterans DD214s who have recently discharged. We now get free training from New York State Division of Veteran Services so we can keep our accreditations. There's a lot of neat new advances. Accreditations, I just wanted to talk about that quickly because we've gathered quite a few over the years. American Legion is our primary. We use that accreditation, and there's a lot of rules around that. But in order to get accredited, you have to follow a lot of different laws. And an attorney has to be accredited as well to assist a veteran in claims for benefits. So we have the Red Cross, the American Legion, National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, and this year, New York State Division of Veteran Services. The accreditation, we have all these rules, again, just stuff I want to kind of bring up, more than 13. You don't have to actually know all of them. But you have to know that we have to, you know, follow all these different neat things. So everybody knows about FOIA, privacy, HIPAA, and all that good stuff. We have one that's really, really happened and had a lot to do with claims processing, but also had to do with the scandal in Arizona while all these veterans were dying before they were getting into VA hospitals or getting VA care. So they actually came up with this regulation where veterans could be seen by non-VA providers. Unfortunately, that led to a lot of veterans getting in debt collection. VA couldn't make all these private hospitals turn off their billing system. So when you register at the front desk, they'd send a bill out to the veteran because the VA wasn't paying it in a timely fashion. 2015, the standard form claim rule came about. They call these advisory opinions. They're posted in the federal register, and that's kind of how we keep up on this stuff. So effective in 2015, if you don't put an application in that's the exact one the VA meant you to do, they'll completely ignore it. It used to be you could, you know, write on lipstick, on a, you know, a napkin, what your intent was, and the VA had to follow up with you and figure out what you wanted. They had a duty to assist under the 2000 Act, the Veterans' Claims Assistance Act. So, you know, Veterans Choice Program, again, you know, there's a lot of different regulation around it, and it ended in June 6, 2019. And then, you know, they again authorized to redo it in 2017. Then they, you know, in 2017, do the Rapid Appeals Modernization Act because there was this ginormous backlog of appeals waiting to be seen by a judge. And we had one that took 11 years of somebody to wait. This person lived in Springwater. So it took 11 years for them to get to. So they created this thing, which I'll get into. Then it became the Appeals Modernization Act. Now, you'll know that there's two years between each one of these dates. It takes two years for the federal government to actually implement anything. It's a lot of fun. So we're jumping from one foot to the other trying to keep up with VA as they change these regulations internally. It's a neat process. So what they did is they came up with three lines. Instead of having one big line, they said, everybody else get into three lines, and then he found success that the line to see a law judge is a lot shorter. Well, yeah, because you put everybody else in those other two lines. So of course, that line's shorter, but you still have the same amount of people waiting. Urgent Care, so the VA Mission Act of 2018, veterans now, if they are eligible and on VA health care, can go to urgent care so long as they're in the VA's network, and that includes NOS and the Geneseo urgent care there. So it actually is basically Choice Act Part III. It's just, there were so many issues, and now there's a lot less billing issues that we've had to help veterans deal with, with the collections agencies and issues. So, yeah, under the VA, you know, non-VA care, if the VA can't see a veteran, they can actually put them in community care provider so long as, you know, the VA is the one driving that. So the veteran has to contact the VA, and the VA has to connect them with that outside provider. It's working a lot better than the original iteration of the Choice Program. This is the newest, latest, and greatest confusing legislation, the Comprehensive Assistance in Family Caregivers Expansion. You know, originally back 2001, veterans from 2001 and earlier, I mean, to today, I guess, anybody that needed a caregiver to take care of them with their ADLs could get a monthly stipend for that. caregiver to help take care of them and an extra, you know, assistance, things of that nature. Well, a lot of people were upset that it didn't include all of the veterans prior to, your WWII, your Korean, you know, your Cold War vets. All of those veterans were kind of cut out of this program. So they're expanding it. So of course, they passed that, what was it, in 20, well, it almost, what, two years ago? So now, October 20, just the first, and we put out a bunch of information on this. You know, the veterans that served prior to 1975, which is the end of the Vietnam War, also can get this benefit or this stipend of up to $1,791 per month that need a caregiver. But anybody from 75 to September 01, the Cold War vets are left out in the cold. They are not eligible for another two years. That creates some confusion. Stabby McDonald was a case back in 2016, and that had everything to do with emergency medical expenses. A veteran might be, you know, might go to an emergency center that was driven there by a medic on one of our ambulances, and they get this monstrous bill and they're not actually eligible. The VA appealed that decision and again, Wolf v. Wilkie in 2019 said, what did you not understand about our original decision? You know, VA, or veterans are actually eligible for that, and that may cost the American taxpayer around 6.5 billion. They have actually appealed this again. So another advisory opinion on, in 2018 regarding veterans' pensions. Veterans' pensions are not necessarily based on when they serve, but more so about their income. So like, let's say a single widow that doesn't need help with her ADLs or is not housebound, her income limit would be 8,500. So if she's on, let's say, Social Security, that's 12,000 plus a year that she's getting out of Social Security, so she won't get anything. But now they've actually imposed an asset cap of $123,000, which actually, you know, potentially would include anything more than the two-acre allotment that you can have with a house, which isn't great for your rural American. You know, they'd have to be either sold off or calculated as an asset. Camp Lejeune, so we keep hearing about presumptive conditions and things of that nature. So Camp Lejeune, back in 2012, they passed an act saying, hey, you know, these veterans that serve 30 days between 30-year period may have got all these different cancers, right? And that was all due to, you know, water contamination due to dry cleaners. You go to military bases, dry cleaners everywhere. They were dumping their stuff in the water, it became contaminated. One of these, we had an argument with the VA because, and I think I talked about this before, liver cancer is on there, I believe, and we had a veteran got denied for, for his issues, and it was based on the actual, the actual water, you know, drinking that, it goes through the stomach, but the stomach's not on there, right? You would think it's a no-brainer that the stomach, if you had a stomach cancer, but his stomach cancer metastasized and caused the liver cancer, and the VA denied that person benefits. And we still are arguing that because, again, I've never put any fluid directly in my liver. So the Blue Water Navy Act. This just took effect January 1 of 2020. Okay? This allows the VA to extend presumptive to veterans from Agent Orange exposure. Currently, there are 14 illnesses caused by Agent Orange. This was actually signed into law, but then became effective in January 1, and we kind of knew it was happening mid-2019. What did we do? Well, I remember me telling you about all these neat little accomplishments and digitizing things and whatnot. I had two lists of veterans that we knew of that served in Vietnam, in the Navy during that period, and we personally called every single one of them. We had the ability to be that proactive. And that's why we do what we do in these really cool, I love electronics and it makes our lives a lot easier, but there's no one else that can be that proactive in the state of New York and put that, that kind of effort and that much care into what we do. So the Blue Water Navy Act happened. Now, Procopio v. Wilkie, that was the case that made this happen. You know, for the longest time, the VA had always said, well, if you were in Vietnam, you were exposed to Agent Orange. Okay? Well, what is Vietnam? Technically includes the 12 nautical miles outside of Vietnam. You know, they never said you had to be actually in Vietnam, so this was to the benefit of all those Navy veterans. Expansion of conditions, so they want, based on the National Defense Authorization Act that has not passed yet and it may not, there are a lot of advocacy groups right now arguing this. So this is something we have on our minds, waiting to have bladder cancer, hyperthyroidism, Parkinson's-like symptoms. Surprisingly, I see a lot of diagnoses that are not Parkinson's, but like Parkinson's. And then it's not on there, but a lot of people want hypertension added as well. So these are all the different things presumed to be caused by Agent Orange exposure. These are fairly easy claims. If you have the diagnosis, you served in Vietnam, you're pretty much going to win that one. We don't usually promise results, but these are relatively easy. Future issues. Aquis form, you know, film-forming foam and other things of that nature. Airports, military installations that have airfields, there's a type of chemical in the agent that foams that put out a fire, and they practice with this stuff. Firepeople practice with that foamy liquid to put out the fires on airstrips. So that was a thing. And that may happen for all the airfields in every place across the world. We do a lot of public engagement. Every year, at least twice a year, we go to all of these different events. We had the Veterans Victory Dance, which was one of my favorite outreach things. I got to learn how to dance and to swing music and had a big 18-piece band and it made some money and brought some awareness to veterans that needed rides, which was a great thing. We've done a lot of different medal presentations, you know, Suicide Prevention Task Force did a huge, you know, collaboration with us on one thing last year. So we do a lot of that and we want to continue to kind of do that. We're going to change how we do that. So where are we going to go? This is one of those plans that kind of died because of COVID. Think of that as a really neat, you know, program for veterans locally to get discounts. And, you know, it's very difficult for a vet to kind of plan their day around their discounts. You know, you do go up to Lowe's up in Monroe County and you get 10%. Every veteran knows that. But I can, I have the ability to create apps. That's one thing I do. So it's kind of a neat idea that we were talking to the county clerk about, the Livingston County Chamber and local businesses that offer that and have it on your phone. So if you're a veteran, you can wander up the street and know immediately that that person right there is giving a veteran discount. Now, veterans bring over $16 million in tax-free federal money that we help them get. And this is a great way to get that into our county coffers through, you know, helping stimulate sales, local sales, a shop local, because local veterans and local businesses do care and they do want to give veterans a discount. So that one's on hold because of the whole COVID. You heard about this Monument thing? I don't know if you had. You know, I asked you guys a couple of years back, and we started actually on Valentine's Day, making the first poppies. If it weren't for my buddy, Don Higgins, I can call him that now, Marine Corps, Marine for Life, one of those people that you come up to and it's, you know, I have this brainiac idea, I don't know if this will ever happen, but what are your thoughts? And it's like, yeah, that's a good idea. Why don't you do that? So you always know that there's somebody right behind you that's got your back, and that's Don Higgins. Talked to Ole Olson. He said, you know, on one condition, I want to show or teach these veterans how to weld their own individual poppy. You approve this. This is part of you. We all did this. And it's an amazing display of what a community can do. We used less resources because people were making it. It was an amazing project. People poured a lot of support into this and, you know, it's an amazing project. Get an opportunity to go out there and see each individual one. We aimed for 100. We have 250 poppies out there. I just saw some news coverage. It was really cool. John Kutchko, you know, has got several thousand shares on his Facebook page. We do want to dedicate this on Veterans Day. We want to do this in person. We will see how that works out with the whole COVID situation. We might have to get a little, you know, creative, I guess is the word. It's, I think, unprecedented is another word I've heard over and over and over again. Reimagine is, you know, Ian loves that word, that term. So this is an indication of what we can do. These are things that we've done. We have a bright future ahead and we are going to improve the services of our office to veterans. And one of those new things. That's why she's sitting over. So Laura Stradler is the Director of the Veterans Outreach Center, and I'm sure you've heard of them. She, prior to that, was the Monroe County Veteran Service Office Director. I did call her occasionally and say, hey, how do you guys do this and what can I do better? And she turned me on to this new software thing that really gave us the ability to be more proactive. And she's always been very supportive of our veteran community. They offer like services. They don't do a whole lot of claims, you know, somebody else does that. Why duplicate services? And we, here in Livingston County and most rural communities, we collaborate to get the best bang for our buck. You know, the more people working together, the better services we can provide. And she's here to talk a little bit about the expansion of services. Starting this Friday, veterans will have the opportunity to come to our office and see somebody that works at the Veterans Outreach Center. And she'll talk to you a little bit more about their program. And every other Friday from here on out, Veterans Outreach Center will be able to help veterans out of our office. So Laura Stradler.
Thank you so much for having me today, and I'll, I'll try to be quick, but I do just want to thank Jason as well for inviting me to come and speak to you today. Jason is obviously a terrific supporter for veterans, and I think you're very fortunate to have him heading up your Veteran Service Agency here. I, I wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, just what we're doing in collaboration with the VSA and also what we do at Veterans Outreach Center in Rochester. I'm an Army veteran myself. I spent eight years in the Army, so it's obviously something very near and dear to my heart to care for those who have worn their nation's uniform. We have been talking, Jason and I, for years, but more recently, in the last couple of years, about how can Veterans Outreach Center do more to support the veterans in Livingston County? We, you know, we do see them coming into our doors at times. We offer a variety of services, including employment and training programs. Last year at VOC, we helped 226 veterans get back into meaningful employment, which when we parsed that out based on part-time, full-time, and what their average wages were, that was about a $6.8 million impact in our community. So that's one of our big programs. We also have a center that's got chiropractic care, massage therapy, hydro massage, which is big for veterans who have suffered different types of trauma and maybe don't want that actual physical touch of somebody else, but still have chronic pain and mental health issues that can benefit from massage. We have, you know, a variety of things onsite. We've got three homeless shelters, two for men, one for women. We have a permanent supportive housing complex that we just opened in February of this year, downtown Rochester, for affordable, affordable living for veterans. And a whole host of other onsite, you know, budgeting, coaching, peer support programs that I think are really important. But, but that's all in Rochester. And so what are we doing for the folks who don't live in Rochester and who have served their country and still may be experiencing some challenges? And so Jason and I got talking about, well, one of the things that's happening in Rochester is RTS is providing, and part of their strategic redesign and something that we worked with them on, free bus passes to all veterans in Monroe County. And so we asked them, could you take this to the surrounding counties? And they said, we can definitely do that. And so can you connect us to the, to the veterans in those surrounding counties? And so our agency is in collaboration with RTS, bringing a portable bus pass system. And every other week, we're going to be onsite here at your VSA, printing those bus passes so that your veterans can all ride RTS buses for free in this region as well. And we have a variety of case managers who work at Veterans Outreach Center, who will be spreading their time out between some of the surrounding counties around Monroe County and Livingston County, of course, being one of them, supporting on those issues that are random and time-consuming and, you know, and sometimes can make the difference between a veteran, you know, being able to keep their home or keep their job. And so, you know, for example, if a, if a person who grew up in Texas needs to get a birth certificate because they, they lost their license from a DWI and, you know, they're struggling with that, we have programs that we can pay for that. And so we can send our case managers down and deal with some of those random things that, you know, Jason's office obviously is slammed with keeping up with all those VA regulations and those benefits, you know, processing claims and things like that. But our staff can focus on maybe some of those, those softer issues that can still be very impactful in a person's life. So we're really excited about being able to do that and excited about being here in Livingston County and supporting your veterans and just appreciate the opportunity to work together with Jason and his office. Thank you.
So I did want to close quickly. On your desk, I went through here and I can't take the credit for this wonderful handout you have here. Julie Berry does an amazing job and has been, ever since she stepped foot in Livingston County, doing, doing the job that she's doing. So I do have to give her the credit for putting this together. Live on Livingston is what we've been talking about between Veterans Outreach Center and myself. And it's just been kind of one of those thoughts that I've had in the back of my head. You know, we've been talking about suicide prevention, we've been talking about activities to get veterans together. We've, we've been talking about, you know, recreation. There are many great organizations currently in Livingston County already providing things. There's nothing that says we can't expand on this collaboration idea. Bring people together and help bolster that, that network. So, you know, if you see money in the, in the budget, that's what that's for, you know? And again, we may or may not go with that. These are just conversations, so we'll hammer something out by January. If the budget passes, we'll be able to flesh it more. But I do believe in supporting our local non-for-profits that do provide services here in our own backyard, not recreating a wheel, but just providing them with support, network, and the ability to communicate across the different borders of our towns and help get veterans and their families engaged in these self-care activities, as they call them. So that's there for you to look at and to know that these are things that kind of go on behind the scenes and maybe something that we can look forward in the future with more collaboration with a bigger network of non-for-profits. So I do want to take a moment to thank all of you personally. I am blessed to have this job as a veteran of the war, you know, and the people I meet, the people I serve, it's truly an honor to give back to my community. So thanks for giving me that opportunity, Ian, and for keeping me around for hopefully another five years. See you guys. Thank you very much.
Next time we agenda, it's a preferred agenda, those resolutions.
We're claiming the month of October 2020 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Livingston County. We're claiming October 4th through the 10th, 2020, as Mental Illness Awareness Week in Livingston County. We're claiming October 25th through the 31st, 2020, as National Lead Poisoning Prevention Week. We're claiming the month of October 2020 as Domestic Family Violence Education and Awareness Month for Livingston County. Designating the Livingston County Area Chamber of Commerce as the 2021 Official Tourism Promotion Agency. Providing public hearing on petitions to join existing agricultural districts and referring them to Livingston County Agricultural and Farm Land Protection Board.
Thank you. Ask at this time if there's any discussion on the resolutions that are part of the preferred agenda. Hearing no discussion, I'd ask for a motion on the second. Move both.
Western move.
Second gap. Motion on the second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Close. None. Period. The board will speak for itself.
Evan.
Aye.
Helen.
Aye.
Kenesha.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lama.
Aye.
Sabonya.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted.
Next we have some resolutions that require a separate.
Mrs. Walker, authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Center for Nursing Rehabilitation, BioServe Inc. and Genesee Valley Educational Corporation.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelleronya. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contracts for the Livingston County Department of Health, National Association of County and City Health Officials, H.O.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan. Kelleronya.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Department of Health, Environmental Testing and Consulting Agency.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions on this contract. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelleronya. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Verifying the use of New York State Office of Mental Health Funding.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan. Kelleronya. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contracts for the Livingston County Office of Workforce Development, U.S. Bureau, CAF of Charities of Livingston County, Chances and Changes, Inc., Geneseo Parish Outreach Center, Inc., and Nicholas Noe's Memorial Hospital.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mrs. Walker. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan. Kelleronya.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Mr. Demming, awarding bids for the Livingston County for cleaning products and disposable paper products, WB Mason Economy Products and Solutions.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan. Kelleronya.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following grant award contracts for the Livingston County Office of Emergency Management, Petra Tech, Inc., and New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelleronya.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following professional services contracts for various engineering services for the Highway Department, Fisher Associates, Lovella Associates, and Hopefully Designers.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. There's one thing as Chairman I was planning on doing, but COVID-19 interfered with that. I was going to, those of us that have been here for quite a few years, Mr. Higgins was always asked to come up and explain highway resolutions. And I'd ask Don, just out of past practice, if you're here to talk about that in this highway resolution. Any, any questions or discussion on this resolution? During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan.
Aye.
Kelleronya.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a quitclaim deed and related documents to ensure the transfer, parcel on Westlake Road, Smith, pound of Geneseo.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any questions or concerns on this quitclaim deed. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan. Kelleronya.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
Absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for snow and ice removal through the 2020-2021 season, Ontario County.
Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any questions or concerns on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan. Kelleronya.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo. Groblin. Lester.
Aye.
Lima. Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Amending a portion of Resolution 2020-15.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask if there's any questions or concerns on this resolution.
Evan. Kelleronya.
Aye.
Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Trinity Services, Boothfield.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan. Kelleronya. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ashen. Portage.
Aye.
Barta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Barta.
Aye.
Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Mr. Pangrazio, amending 2020 Livingston County Budget, Board of Elections, Department of Health, there are three, and Workforce, there are three.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Ask at this time if there's any questions on this resolution. During none, I will proceed to the chat.
Evan. Kelleronya. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing transfer of funds.
Move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution.
Evan. Kelleronya. Canisius.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Lester. Lima.
Aye.
Livonia. Mount Morris. North Enzo.
Aye.
Nande. Stewart.
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign a lease agreement for Mosaic Health.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Pangrazio. Ask at this time if there's any questions on this resolution.
Aye.
Geneseo.
Aye.
Groblin.
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Accepting report of committee on records compensation insurance estimate and apportionment of county self-insurance for the year 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this particular resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Trinity Services, Bruce King.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the purchase of five 2021 Chevrolet Tahos for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Websmark Chevrolet Outlet.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion at this time on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Amending the 2020 Livingston County Salary Schedule of County Clerk and Department College.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Amending the purchase of one 2021 Dodge Charger for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Robert Green Auto and Truck.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion at this time on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Amending the 2020 Livingston County Salary Schedule of County Clerk and Department College.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the Chairman of the Livingston County Board of Supervisors to sign the following contract for the Livingston County Information and Technology Services Department, RelCom Inc., there are two and network experts of New York.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Amending the 2020 Livingston County Salary Schedule of County Clerk and Department College.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the purchase of five 2021 Chevrolet Tahos for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Websmark Chevrolet Outlet.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?
Aye.
Mount Morris?
North Anso?
Aye.
Nunde?
Aye.
Ashen?
Aye.
Portage?
Aye.
Sparta?
Aye.
Springwater?
Aye.
West Sparta?
Aye.
York?
Aye.
Ayes 1865, absent 144, adopted. Authorizing the purchase of five 2021 Chevrolet Tahos for the Livingston County Sheriff's Office, Websmark Chevrolet Outlet.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Congrazio. I'll ask at this time if there's any questions or discussion on this resolution during the vote.
Evan?
Caledonia?
Aye.
Canisius?
Aye.
Geneseo?
Aye.
Groveland?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Lima?
Aye.
Lebonia?